All right, welcome everybody to the Grand Fork City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2023. Roll call, please. Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami. Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just wanted to highlight a couple of elementary school students that won the Saratoma Club Freedom Essay Contest. So we were over there today and celebrated their victory, and they got to read their essays. So just a great day. So I just wanted to give a spotlight to Haley Frank. She took third place, student at Wilder. Second place was Evelyn Crone. She's at Discovery. And first place was Roy Christensen. So they worked really hard. There was about 230 essays, and those are the top three. So pretty, pretty, pretty great young people with certainly civic-minded. So really, really fun and filling event to be able to attend today, earlier today at lunch. So just wanted to highlight that. We'll move on to awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is a proclamation for Freedom Week, February 18th through the 24th.
All right, I got to read this earlier today, so hopefully I get it even better this time around. But proclamation, Freedom Week, February 18th to 24th, 2024. Whereas Saratoma International, a civic service organization, the motto which is "Service to Mankind", has adopted a Freedom Week program dedicated to the reemphasis of the values and responsibilities of people in a free society. And whereas Saratoma International has promoted the distribution of copies of the Declaration of Independence throughout its entire membership of clubs. And whereas the Greater Grand Fork Saratoma Club is planning to carry out special patriotic and civic activities during the 2024 Freedom Week. And whereas it seems proper and fitting to accord official recognition to this patriotic movement. Now therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim and designate February 18th to the 24th, 2024, as Freedom Week, and urge all citizens to support the objectives of this week. All right, thank you. We'll move on to three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance, amending Grand Fork City Code 15-0201 and 15-0202 as they relate to application for maintenance of water service lines.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing on item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on item 3.1 this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll open up to council.
Motion of approval.
The second.
Motion to approve from Mr. Weigel, second from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, citizen comments as they relate to action items. Does you have any comments related to action items? There are none? All right, we'll move on to five, action items. I know we had one, 516, we needed to poll. And then was there any other items that council wanted polled for further discussion? Ms. Osowski.
I don't think we've went over 517, 518, 519, 20, or 21, correct?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely go. Those are planning and zoning ones. If you want some more insight on those, we can certainly pull all those. I think we've got, got staff here that can, I think Ryan, yeah, Ryan can go over all those.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, poll 5.5, please.
5.5. All right, any others? All right, seeing no other comment, we'll move forward on items. Look for motion item 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, 5.13, 5.14, and 5.15. Motion approved from Vice President Weber. And second, we'll give to Ms. Lunskey. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So Marine, we've got 5.5 and then 516 through 521.
Perfect. 5.5, bid award for Project 8604, South 48th Street, Shared Use Path, 17th to 32nd Avenue South.
Mr. Karinko, before you start, I think Mr. Weber's got a comment, so we'll hand it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've spoken with Councilmember Vean about this. He shared his decades of engineering wisdom with me. And I've also spoken with President Sandy, who schooled me on federal funding streams, et cetera. And I received a very detailed presentation and report, and I am ready to move forward on this and ready to vote on this, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll move approval.
We've got a motion and a second, a motion, President Weber, Vice President Weber, a second from Ms. Osowski. Any further comment on item 5.5? Looks like you're gonna have the night off, Mr. Karinko. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Skaryenko and Grausler, thanks. Thanks for all the work and the time. Bye-bye.
5.16, sign appeal request from Newman Center, 412 Cambridge Street.
Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. What we, the request before you, I think I'll first start with the fact that the applicant has asked for this to be postponed until our first meeting in March. But I can quickly review the request, which is for a sign appeal along Cambridge Street. The church currently is not allowed a sign, and what staff recommended was that the sign that would go up in its place would be the same that we allow in other residential neighborhoods for churches. The size meets, actually, the size of the sign is there currently, but they were gonna do an electronic sign. The piece that was different from their request from what P&amp;Z approved was that their request was for a one-second hold time, and our code allows for one-hour hold times. It's just meant to be, you know, here's the times of services for the week, and then beyond that, the events of the week, and it's not meant to flash through often at all. So that's where the differing requests came from what the applicant had asked for and what Planning and Zoning approved. With that, they did ask for it to be postponed because they weren't able to be here tonight. So with that, we'll ask for it to be postponed until first meeting of March.
Do you want March 4th or March 18th?
I just went through the... Yeah, the church was asking for that one-second hold time.
Okay, March, would you, we've got further discussion. Would you prefer March 4th or March 18th?
March 4th.
March 4th, okay. I guess we can do further discussion now.
I'm gonna postpone until March 4th.
I second post.
Got a motion from Vice President Weber and a second from Ms. Osowski to postpone until March 4th. Any further comment on item 516? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.17 is final approval replat of Lot 2, Block 1, Highland Point 6 Edition, 3800, South Washington Street.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks, I'll just have you on each of these next items if you want to give some context.
Thank you, Mayor. So this first one is, it's a simple replat. Right now, it's on the north side of 40th and Washington. The applicant has a interested party looking to go in that northwest quadrant of that intersection, and it's for what we call a quick-service restaurant-type service. And they've gone through the plating and to break up that parcel to sell it. So it meets the zoning, and staff was recommending approval, as was Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. Brooks?
So they want to put a fast-food restaurant there?
Correct.
Okay, and that's on the south end over kind of I Like Choice Fitness?
Correct. It'd be, I'll say Kitty Corner from that Holiday Gas Station, if you're aware of the 40th, yeah.
Do you know what kind of fast-food restaurant they want to put there?
They have, they have been working with this, and I will say it's a common, they haven't, they haven't submitted an actual application as of yet and asked for it not to be used as of yet until they closed the deal, but yes.
I move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from Mr. Weigel. Any further discussion points? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
518 is the final approval of replat of lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Homestead Grove, 1st Edition.
Mr. Mayor, this is a similar request. So this is a replat of a property. This one's in the northeast quadrant of 47th and Washington, and this would be just north of the Valley Dairy, or Marathon, I think they're, they're referred to as now, in that same Choice area, but just further to the south. Again, a quick-service type restaurant in that area. I would say probably more on the beverage industry. But again, they've, they haven't submitted an application as of yet.
Okay. I guess, one, I don't like seeing fast-track stuff. I don't know why we didn't get to see this last week. That's, I, I have been asking for that for a long time. I don't understand why we have to fast-track some of these items, especially when this meeting was held on the 7th. We could have had it last week at the Committee of the Whole. So I would appreciate seeing items first presented there and then move on to council. I mean, I am going to motion to approve this because I think that companies have a right to build where they want, but you know, we're putting two, just thinking health-wise, we're putting two fast-food restaurants right next to a hospital that serve seed oils and probably garbage food. And I mean, good thing that they're right next to Choice Fitness, I guess, because they can go work it off. But I guess if I was a Blue Zone, I would be, or Altru even, I would be fighting for a little bit more of a healthier community. But with that said, I'm motion approval.
We got a motion, do we have a second? Second from, so we got a motion from Ms. Osowski.
The mayor, my name?
Yeah, Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, please.
Yeah, I think Ms. Osowski's concept about wanting fast-tracks to come through Committee of the Whole actually does make sense. Unfortunately, sometimes these organizations are actually on a tight timeline. And often, the first meeting of council is prior to planning and zoning, and so you get, you ultimately end up with multiple weeks between meetings. I think that in order to keep things moving expeditiously, and it's not that we've always done it this way, but essentially, we have always done it this way, that these sorts of issues are dealt with on our first meeting timeline. Ultimately, it's, you know, it's our responsibility to be watching and staying on top of the planning and zoning meetings. So I understand what you're saying. I think, I think the process has worked pretty well for many years. So I do appreciate your approval, and I certainly am happy to support the motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, maybe you could just clarify quickly, because I think the fast-track is more related to the number of lots than the way it's being parceled out, so people can understand, maybe that aren't aware of what that process looks like versus the regular process, the second meeting, essentially.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So in this case, anything that doesn't have right-of-way involved in on it, then we're able to, what we call fast-track, but that's probably a little bit of a misnomer, but it's meant to indicate to the developers, they only have to go through Planning Commission once and City Council once. Once we take right-of-way, then we have to do a street and highway ordinance, which then requires a preliminary and a final approval. And then that's a two-month process, which I think to what President Sandy had alluded to, that's, that's where we kind of get some indication from the developers that we're not business-friendly, because that takes a long time to, you know, finish up a deal. So it isn't meant to not be before you multiple times, but for the Planning Commission to act on it, make the recommendation up to you, essentially, we do end up missing that Committee of the Whole. But our, the items from Planning and Zoning Commission don't typically come before this item. They usually just go right up to City Council. But you know, I'm certainly open to any and all recommendations. And we can do a better job, too, of sending out all of our packets out to you guys ahead of time prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do give those on to Planning Commission Commissioners the Friday before our meeting, which is the first Wednesday of the month.
Right, and I understand that, you know, sometimes with the dates of the Planning and Zoning Committee meetings, that sometimes it does fall that way. But I believe it said that this was on the 7th, and we had Committee of the Whole last week. And so I guess that's where I'm just kind of confused, why we just completely skipped that when it obviously was ready. So just a heads-up, kind of would be nice, or maybe, you know, as soon as you get the information or the item number written up, you can, you could send it out ahead of time if you're, if you know it's gonna be at the City Council meeting.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think anything in code would preclude us from coming to the Committee of the Whole and provide you guys all the information, even if a recommendation hasn't been had yet through Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably have a discussion if the council wants to start doing that. It'd probably be good for council to approve that if we're gonna start pulling those in. And certainly, their agendas are available online, just like everything else. But if you want to take that extra step and actually send it to people, maybe they can opt in or opt out of that, but it certainly would be helpful.
Absolutely.
All right, any further discussion on 518? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
519, preliminary approval of request for vacation of alley adjacent to Alexander and Ives north of 9th Avenue North.
All right, you want to, why don't you start, Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can Ryan brief the next three items all as one, please?
Yeah, I think they're all related to the Alexander and Ives, second, yeah, that's, that would be, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
President Sandy.
Yeah, thank you. So all of these are related to what I'll refer to as the North End Bremmer Bank site at the corner of 10th and North Washington. There's going to be, there's a small vacation of property because the property on the south side of the bank, which was an alley and looks like an alley to most of us, is paved and was actually part of Bremmer's property. So that's the vacation part of this. In terms of the plat, there's three lots that are gonna be created, one to the west of the bank, which is sitting vacant today, and then one to the south of the bank, across the alley, to the, to the south. And the final piece is that rezoning. So they're gonna make the zoning the same as the rest of the block. The former bank site will remain B3, which is a general business district. And then the remaining two lots, which are vacant today, they're grass, they're being mowed. Those are gonna be R3, which they've indicated, and I think in our, in your information packet there, they show townhomes, one on each side, one to the, to the west and one to the south. That fits that R3 zoning, and it actually fit probably an R2 zoning even, and would match the neighborhood. We have, I've been receiving some emails, I think you have too today, about, just asking about notification. That comes at final. We'll notify 800 feet around this, and actually, that takes the notification two blocks to the south and west and north and east. So there's going to be a substantial mailing that we're gonna send out later this week, prior to the final approval on that rezoning. And then you guys, it'll be before the City Council, March 18th.
So all three of these will be in front of the City Council again then on March 18th?
Yeah, the vacation, I think, may come potentially the first Monday of May. Kind of looking at Sherry for the... Oh, sorry, first Monday of April, correct. So that, just due to public publication requirements at the Herald, that one usually just takes a little bit longer, but the rezoning and plating will come March 18th, before you.
Are there any further questions on?
Mayor, I'll move approval of the last three items.
Why don't you, if you could just read them in real quickly, Marine, why don't you read them in as all three, so you can read 520 and 521, and then we'll get a vote on all three.
Certainly. So 520 is the introduction of ordinance to dedicate right-of-way and preliminary approval of replat of Alexander and Ives 2nd Resubdivision. 521, introduction of ordinance, preliminary approval of amendment to rezone lots A and C, Block 1, Alexander and Ives 2nd Resubdivision.
All right, so President Sandy, your motion's to approve all three. All right. So that's a motion to approve, 519, 520, 521. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Weigel. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that's it for action items. On to six, information items.
6.1 is the investment portfolio summary as of January 31st.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list as is attached to your agenda.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve paying the bills. Motion from Vice President Weber, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, move on to eight, citizen comments of the general nature. Do you have any citizen comments this evening?
I have three this evening. First one turned in was Paula Valgren.
All right, Ms. Valgren, step up, please.
Do you remember the first time I was here and I told you I've been having a lot of problems at my business? And a couple people drove by in their cars, and they just parked there. Well, one of the guys that was in the car, I was buying my garbage can, putting stuff in, and some guy almost hit me while they were sitting in the car watching. I do believe it was you. I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm, I believe you kind of looked like him, but nothing was ever done. Now, I'm 64 years old. Maybe my time is up, maybe it's not, but I'm telling you, we have a problem over there, big time. And also, number two, they're still digging in the garbage cans, the trash can. And also, number two, they're still digging in the garbage cans, the trash can, throwing everything out. I have pictures of them digging all the stuff out, and I get called from our wonderful, helpful, not, police department, that I have to clean it up. Well, let me tell you what, any of you guys ain't got nothing to do all day? You guys can come help me clean the parking lot up, because I, once it's in the garbage can, that's the city's problem, right?
I would take a guess and say probably not.
Then why is it my fault, why is it my problem to clean up when all these homeless people are riding their bikes, throwing everything out so that they could look for something to pawn at a pawn shop? If they're going to take the time to dig that crap out, they can take the time to put it back in there.
I would agree.
I don't think I should take an hour of my time to come to my business to clean it up. Do you know how crappy it is to pick up food from Slap Shot that's all over the parking lot that they've dug out? It's pretty nasty. Pretty nasty. And number two, or number three, whose bright idea was it to give all the panhandlers permission to stand on the corners and beg for money and piss in a jar and then walk away and leave all their garbage? Do you know how tacky that is? Very tacky. I was in Fargo Sunday for about eight hours. I drove around. Not one time did I see a panhandler on a corner anywhere in Fargo. Here in Grand Forks, they're holding up signs that says, "Don't get me money, put it on my cash app card." And they don't pick up their garbage. Come off the interstate going north. Look at all the garbage and cigarette butts all around there. Pretty sad. And you know what they're also doing? Discriminating the veterans. They're holding signs up that says, "I'm a veteran, homeless, need money." My husband served in Vietnam. He's not out there holding a sign, because he is a veteran. These guys that are holding signs that says they're veterans are not veterans, because you ask for their IDs, they don't have a veteran's card to prove to you that they're veterans. Now, that's a disgrace to all veterans, when people are standing on the roads, holding a sign that says, "Veterans, ex-veteran, need money." Don't you agree? Oh, please don't stop talking, people. I mean, I'd like to know what's going on here. And we have a problem with the motel next to our store. There's the Pawn Shop, there's Slap Shot, there's 701 Thrift. If nobody don't know where 701 Thrift is, the police department does. Do you know how many drug dealers and users are living in that, those motels with the doors shut? There's tons of them. You should see them leaving there at 4:00 in the morning. Yeah, when are you going to tear that building down? It's pretty trashy and tacky. Oh, I can't believe I got everybody to not talk. I'm about this close to closing my business and going back home to the reservation in South Dakota. And I notice there's a lot of businesses closing in Grand Forks, is or not?
Thank you, Ms. Vargren. That's your five minutes. We'll definitely, I know police department's here, and we'll definitely follow up with them.
I have no faith in the police department, and when it's time to vote for a mayor, I won't vote for you.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Vargren.
Next comment card I have is Dennis Denault, but I don't know if he's back. So then I have Sean Beaudel.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sean Beaudel, opened up a business in Grand Forks. I didn't move here, so it's Tark LLC. Craig Spicer, his location rented me some space there, so just for clarification. Tonight, first thing, February 22nd, what is it? Happy birthday, Grand Forks, right? 143 years.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you get Mr. Beaudel's address for his business?
It's the same as Craig Spicer's, Suite 101.
I think they've got it on the card.
Yep.
Please continue.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted, a couple of things I wanted to address is code of conduct for public council. I would vote not to have any at all, I realize it's a trade-off. It looks like on the bottom, there's potential for profiling citizens, right? So for 143 years, what? We didn't need this, right? World War I, II, droughts, et cetera. We have laws in the books to protect individuals. The final thing, and probably the most important thing, relates to the pilot programs, right? And the decision you as board members made. So I have a fairly extensive background. And one thing I always say, if I'm allowed to make a decision, vote, and nobody outside the room will pay me for my opinion, I should consult a professional or expert, right? So when I, when I look at this Baker Tilly, it appears to be a professional, right? Appears to be an expert, until you read the bottom, right? And what does it say? The service of professionals should be sought, right? So you're making tens to 15 million dollars' worth of decisions on non-quality information. If I was sitting in your seat, these are the four red flags, I would not vote on it. Number one, you're 10 to 15 million dollars. There's not quality information. There's like 80% words, 20% numbers. You should have 80% numbers, 20% word. Simplicity of understanding? There's no graphs, right? No charts, easy to understand. Another big red flag, number three, is third-party verification of developers' assumptions, right? You could tell the people whatever you want, and they put them in this document. We'll give you an example of that, quality of numbers, inflation factor, right? What do you think the inflation factor is for apartment complexes, right? To look at the five, 10-year average? Right, I can see by the look in your face, you don't know. It's 4% to 5%. Do you know what they use in the report? Two to two and a half. Excuse me. So if you significantly understate rate, the real inflation rate, what does that lend, right? More likely to get the subsidy, more likely to get the tax and the mental financing. So with that, I mean, I'm just like, another reference point, went to graduate school, North Dakota State University. My professor's Dr. Cole Gustafson, right? Ag finance, very respected professional. One of the things he did on the side was expert witness testimony, right? Expert witness testimony. So he basically, right, put documents like this that people had used for financial presentations, they weren't the caliber they would be. Somebody would be harmed, and you're welcome, here you go to court. So again, I can't emphasize enough that we all have various backgrounds, experiences, et cetera. I would not be comfortable having any of you guys, right, provide financial advice. So final thing is the clarification of the city attorney, right? When the city attorney, who is his purview? Is it just the city, or does it also include the citizens? Because I, again, Mr. Phelan, I call the North Dakota League of Cities. And as far as I can tell, Grand Forks is the only city that the purview of the city attorney does not include the citizens. And again, if you could clarify that, sir, right, your, could you please look at me? Could you clarify that? Is that correct or not correct? Not a trick question. Does the city attorney's purview just include the city and city employees, or does it include and the citizens?
So I'll take your bait, Mr. Beaudel. What do you want, the city attorney to actually represent every single citizen of Grand Forks in every matter that comes before us? They're responsible for dealing with the issues that happen with the city, meaning the mayor, City Council. And when citizens come to us and there are issues that they bring to us that deserve representation, we engage the city attorney. But the city attorney is not responsible for you, who now runs a business, to be your personal attorney now.
Would it be okay if I respond?
Mr. Beaudel, your time is finished, so appreciate you coming here today. Thank you, sir. Move on to nine, city administrator comments.
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Item number 10, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I have some. So regarding Ms. Paula, is panhandling within the city limits against any laws or ordinances that we have? No?
Yeah, Chief, could you give a, just a brief summary of that? I know we're limited by some state statute, too, if I can, I know we've had conversations on this in the past, and...
To address your, excuse me, to address your question, it's actually been addressed by the Supreme Court. As long as they're not impeding traffic and they're not on private property, the act in and of itself of panhandling or loitering is not illegal.
I think that's really the only question that I have or comment, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Any comments this evening? All right, Mr. Cavani?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
No, thank you.
All right, Vice President Weber?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, President Sandy?
Good meeting, no, thank you, Mayor.
All right, that just leaves myself. Just want to thank everybody for coming. Very tight, concise meeting, so I appreciate that. Now we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment.
Motion to adjourn for Ms. Osowski. She beat, she beat Ms. Lunskey the punch, and Ms. Lunskey will second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.